Good morning. It's Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015. We are in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon for our regular Wednesday Board Session, and we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So, we are starting today with a presentation, and this is from the Willamette University PACE program, and I can't remember what PACE stands for. Do you remember what PACE stands for? Anybody know?
Practical Applications for Careers and Enterprises.
So, what's the first, was the PACE stand for?
Practical Applications for Careers and Enterprises.
Ah, Practical Applications for Careers and Enterprises. So, you are in the MBA program there, and this is a group that has been working all year with our Community Services Department and with Commissioner Cameron, a little bit with myself, to explore economic development in Marion County. They completed a project, a very large report, that Commissioner, I think, is in your office for you to look at, and then did their final presentation before their peers in a panel of judges last week, which Tammy Getch and I were able to watch. And today, we've invited them to come here, so a little bit less pressure than it was last week. And we'd like you to come forward then, and introduce yourselves, and give us your presentation. And just know, in here, you're going to have to speak in the microphone, but if you want to move around at all, we have a handheld mic that you can have too.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. So, my name is Kate Strathby, and you introduced the program very well. Thank you. And behind me is my team. We have a team of nine people, not including myself, so eight including myself. And we have been working all year on this, and we're very proud of what we've accomplished. We would also like to say thank you for this opportunity to the Community Development Department, to the Commissioners, and thank you Commissioner Cameron, thank you Commissioner Carlson, and thank you Commissioner Brentano. We also would like to thank EDAB for working with us on this presentation, and our deliverables. It's been really interesting to us, and we've learned economics from the bottom up, so that was, that was fun. So, just a quick overview of what we'll be discussing today. We had six deliverables, and so we will be talking about our stakeholder interviews, organizational chart, county comparisons, innovative practices, academic research, and supplementary data. So, for our stakeholder interviews, we've discussed this at our previous two presentations, but we interviewed 17 different organizations. And many of these organizations play a part in economic development. Many of them are under the 1.5 million, or 1.1 to 1.5 million dollar umbrella for economic development from video lottery funds. So, we looked at organizations such as COG, such as Business Oregon, big players in economic development in the county. We also interviewed private business owners who sit on the EDAB Board to see what their perspective is for economic development. And we also talked to other counties. We have worked with Sarah, and we understand that there will be a follow-up survey in the future to help quantify the data that we found. Overall, the three main themes that we saw as stakeholders, urgent needs in the county are infrastructure repair, land and property use regulations, and also expansion of the county with other counties, working with places like Portland and Eugene, which is already being done, but just maybe on a bigger scale. And there were a lot of responses that said that Marion County did some great work, and in doing so, they worked really well on the landfill in Salem with the Minto Brown Island Bridge, and with the, with business recruitment with businesses like Home Depot. So, there has been very good work done. We also looked at an organizational chart, and this is new information we're presenting to you today. We looked at all of the 990 forms for the not-for-profits that I just discussed, and there were nine separate not-for-profits. And we found that mostly their expenses come from salaries and wages, and their revenues are from grants and membership dues. Salaries and wages are extremely important, as we know. For example, at the last EDAB meeting, we talked about the Santium Canyon Economic Development Conference, and how Allison McKenzie and Renata were huge parts of making that happen. So, those salaries and wages really helped top talent come in and work with not-for-profits to make economic development possible. And we found it difficult to graph these not-for-profit funds. There was such a huge disparity between the funding from Business Oregon to COG, and it was, it was, on the graph, Business Oregon was way above the rest, of course. It's a statewide agency. And then, under that was OSU as the second highest that we looked into. And on the baseline, you saw very small not-for-profits. So, it's difficult to show their size, but these are, again, the large stakeholders that we worked with this, this year. And just to show the funding, we've talked about how the county utilizes that 1.1 to 1.5 million, and we've found the numbers from 2012. And one of our, one of the things that we've seen as a theme is that, in the future, as economic development grows, as EDAB has discussed, that bond payment will eventually be freed up, and that will allow the county to really bring in some great economic development policies and grow in the future. So, that, when that bond payment is paid off, and all the good work is done at Oregon Gardens, we'll be able to see other economic development policies.
Can I stop you before you move to the next slide?
Sure.
So, because the colors are so similar, it's hard for me to tell which is which.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Except for the red. Could you walk us around, and maybe start with the 48%, and then move around to the 1%, so we know exactly which is which?
Sure. So, the 48% is the bond payments from Oregon Gardens. SEDCOR is 13% of the funding, and Travel Salem is 3. Grow North Santium is 3. Oregon Garden Foundation is 4%. And land use planning is 28%. And then, service activities account for 1% of the funds.
Now, service activities, the 200,000 that we put into grants, or what is, where does that fit?
No. So, the grants, that takes up the SEDCOR, Travel Salem, Grow North Santium, and I believe Oregon Garden Foundation section. So, those are, I'm sorry, no, it's, those are not the grants.
Right.
I think it's, sorry. Might be under, it was, might be under SEDCOR. I'm not exactly sure, but I can look into that further for you.
Okay.
The 1% is just, there's extra, like, service fees that were included. One year, it was $12,000. One year, it was around 13, just to implement economic development in the county. So, I will get those numbers to you about the grants in particular.
Well, this is 2012.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but we had, we did, oh, maybe we didn't do grants that year. That's possible. We didn't. We had the moratorium.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we slipped those, and that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
That is the mystery. But if it was...
20%.
Right, yeah. So, it would be around, yeah.
18 to 20.
Yeah, okay.
And we did notice the breakdown for 2013 was different, because the grants fell under the EDAB, I don't know, the EDAB umbrella, rather than the larger section where SEDCOR and Travel Salem are housed. And then, we also looked at just funding in general, what was spent, looking at the amount of funds available. I'm sorry, it's so dark on the green part. It's 1.464 there. So, again, this is a great opportunity when Oregon Gardens, when the bond is no longer being paid, and that will be a huge amount of money to really jumpstart economic development initiatives, new initiatives in the county. We also looked at county comparisons, and we wanted to know, how do we even compare counties to Marion County? And we used six different criteria. So, with this criteria, we then took it and divided it into totals and percentages, and basically doubled our criteria to 12 different criteria. It changed the numbers. So, we had basically population demographic information, industry information, and lottery fund allocation. And we used all of these as criteria. And we found that Lane County was the most similar to Marion, but that Josephine and Jackson combined were second in similarity. Josephine and Jackson, we combined them because they're so different economically than, say, Marion is. However, together, they share SO Ready and SO Ready services, which are very robust services. They have mentorship programs, and they have a new Oregon, Southern Oregon Edge Program, which helps with business recruitment in the area, and they really work on, A, growing businesses, and B, recruiting businesses. So, they share that service, which is why we paired them together. We also looked at Dischutes and Clackamas and Klatsepp County, Counties. And we also have innovative practices that we researched. So, a metropolitan export plan is something that Portland has already instituted, and cities like Syracuse have found it's extremely helpful. In Syracuse, because it's landlocked, they had, they actually took grant money, hired a full-time consultant for metropolitan export, and they've been working on how to get goods and services out of Syracuse, to how to expand out of that landlocked area and really grow across the state. And here in Portland, they created a Green Cities Campaign, and they've been working with, with export in the port system. So, that's an interesting idea. Since Portland already has this service, and has already worked on this idea, we can work with Portland to help grow and, and network up to those ports, so that businesses can grow globally. And the import substitution plan is actually the opposite. So, with this, it's looking at, if we need 30,000 chickens in the area, at some business up in Portland eats 30,000 chickens. Well, if we're taking them from Arizona, how can we find them in Eugene, or how can we find them from Salem, in a farm around here, and keep the money local and keep it in the Oregon government, or, I'm sorry, Oregon economy? And then, the third is small business incubators, and these have been found to be helpful with high tech. So, there are a few in the area. Shemecada actually has a small business incubator program. It's really making sure that people know those services are available and promoting them. And to, to be effective in this, working with nearby counties and states, and working with, overlapping their funding and ours, that, that would be beneficial, to make sure these services are as prominent as they can be. And then, we had academic research, and we've discussed this at our other two presentations. The role of government is tricky. Traditionally, economic, economist, sorry. Traditionally, the role of government is to not really be involved in grants and loans. However, when we researched the program and talked with the stakeholders, we saw how much good was being done by the grant program here, and by, say, COG's revolving loan programs that they help institute. So, even though people who, in the economy, say these things, that's not exactly true on the ground level when you're actually working with businesses and, and trying to build them. With grants versus loans, we also found that, even though grants have clawback provisions, loans are slightly more, more thorough. And so, with that, I mean, loan programs can help, if you have, if you have a certain amount of money, loan programs can help you use that money more often with businesses, so you can help more businesses. We wouldn't ask that there was a high interest rate at all. It would be very, very low. You wouldn't be focusing on making money with a loan program. It would be very, a very small amount, just giving businesses access to that capital, and more businesses access to that capital. Grants, however, are still important, so you could have, like, a split loan and grant program, so that there's more access to capital, but there's also grants for businesses who aren't able to, to find loans, or through traditional means. And then, all of this is really dependent on a changing economic development perspective, especially the role of government section that I just mentioned. And this changing economic development perspective was from a business growth perspective, and is now changing to a community growth and quality of life perspective. And how can we work with a community to build, say, workforce development, human capital, and build those skills, and build the economy from that level up to businesses and to the government? And we also had supplementary data, and a lot of this was based on labor trends. And on the screen, you'll see a labor trend chart, basically saying which areas and cities the, the labor force of Marion County is commuting to every day. So, Salem is the largest, then Kaiser, and Hayesville, and Portland. And this is interesting information. It helped us with our supplement, with our stakeholder interviews, and it helped us with our academic research. Again, here's another chart, it's the labor trend chart. We have more of these in the report that we have provided. But this chart basically shows how many people in the workforce come into the county, and how many stay within the county, and how many are leaving the county for a workforce every day. And we also looked at criteria mapping. We took those six criteria.
Can we go back to that last slide?
Sure.
So, the, the number on the left is the people who are importing into the Marion County on a daily basis for work.
Yes.
54,000.
Yeah.
68 that live here, stay here.
Yes.
And then, 43,000 leave.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And do you have the details on where they go to?
That is the city, sorry, that's the, yeah.
That'll be in the report.
And it is, yes. We also have additional charts in, in the report for that information.
If I could interrupt too, so I was wondering back on that others, so is that a normal flow of workers in a community, or is there anything substant, specific about that?
That's a good question. So, we don't have that information at this time, but we can get that for you in the future. We haven't had the opportunity to compare it to other counties yet, but we can get that information.
So, the theory is, I think, what we, what we believe is that a lot of people live up in the Portland area and commute down to work in state government. I mean, that's kind of the...
Makes sense.
The sense that we've always had. So, it's gonna be interesting to know what proportion of that 54,000 comes from the north down.
Okay.
And, and then, in terms of where people go, my guess is they also head north. They live here, so kind of lifestyle choice, or whatever.
And that's correct, as judging from where they're going to with Kaiser and Portland City, they are heading north. Seems like a small amount on the chart, however, but we can look into that information more for you. So, thank you for the questions. And with the criteria mapping, we looked at those six criteria. We actually used all 12. So, we also looked at the percentages of prevalence of the retail sector. And as you can see, this is one example, but you can see that the retail sector is the most prominent on the coast, around Lincoln City area. And Marion County is lighter, but we do have the Woodburn outlet mall and other retail opportunities in the county, so it is not the lightest. And that concludes our presentation. So, if you have any questions, I would be glad to take them. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, I kind of just want to ask her, so, so what do you think about it, now that you've spent a year?
We, we feel that the county is actually doing a lot of work. So, when we started in September, I mean, I think, I believe Sarah was new, and the economic development, economic development was changing from EDAB, and now Sarah and Tamara have been working more on economic development. And it seems like the county has been, has been researching just as much as we have been. And we've noticed that Sarah's, Sarah's been a step ahead of us the whole time with, with research and, and knowing what the, what economic development policies are out there. And so, the county is doing great work. It's, it's growing and it's changing, and economic development itself is changing. So, that's, that's a need that needs to continue. That trend needs to continue, to always research and, and change. And one of our suggestions at our, our past presentation was to reassess and reevaluate the economic situation of the county. So, to have people who are already doing that, it's extremely important. And other counties have maybe two, or four, or even six full-time economic development staff. But the fact that Marion County is known for having SEDCOR and EDAB and COG, those are really important stakeholders, and to also have staff who are already working on that has been very impressive, especially to stakeholders like the Association of Oregon Counties. They were highly impressed with Marion County already. So, thank you, Commissioner Brentano.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the, the work. I guess I want to boil it down to, you're in MBA program, you're interviewing for a job, and the three of us are trying to decide whether we want to hire you or not. And, and I'm still searching for a couple of things. What is it that, that, I know your, one of your recommendations was a revolving loan fund, and some of the benefits that you described. The second one was the demographics and the population. Those were your two recommendations.
Yes.
What would you say that if we were to hire you five years from now, you would see going on differently, or you would like to see differently that's happening five years from now than what's happening in the nine months or six months that you've been working on this? What would it look like, and what type of results would we be able to measure and look at?
Okay. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Cameron. We, I would say with those two recommendations, those are suggestions. And if I were to work in the county specifically, just myself, I would work on, as you said, building relationships within the Latino community. And we discussed this at the EDAB meeting last time. And several organizations like North Santium Economic Development Coalition, they are already doing that. However, there is a, a need for the Latino population to grow. As the population is growing, we need to see the business growth match that. So, the Latino Business Council, for example, is working on those relationships, and they're working to build Latino businesses and make sure they have all of the things that they need. So, I think, personally, I would try to work on, on that aspect, and working with Latino Business Council and other stakeholders within that community, because it's 26% of Marion County's population, which is double that of the state of Oregon. So, the state of Oregon has 12% of the Latino population. I would try to work on meeting those needs. Like we, we talked about, we're building the community up to economic development. And then, secondly, with the revolving loan fund, COG does have a revolving loan fund, so that idea would just promote more businesses, and more businesses would have funds available to them. Whereas, now, funds are utilized by, for example, GK or Mastercraft Furniture, they're used once. And it's important to have grants, but also to have that access to capital for more businesses. So, that's up to the discretion of EDAB and to the Commissioner, Commissioners. But it's, it's something to consider, and I think just considering that is an important option.
Well, if I may, ma'am chair. One of the things you, one of your slides there, you talked about the metropolitan export.
Sure.
The import locally.
Mm-hmm.
There you go. Import solution plan, and small business. It seems like a really good strategy to take a look at when you're looking at a geographic area. Did you see any import substitution plans? Did you identify anything that, that's happening? And here in Marion County, for example, we've toured recently some manufacturing, agricultural manufacturing. In fact, Sarah and I just went to a hay press manufacturing about three weeks ago. Did you see anything in your research that we can focus on to build an infrastructure that would be a supply chain infrastructure?
That's a great question. Thank you. We didn't specifically. However, some cities have built, for specifically the import substitution plan, they've built websites that businesses propose, or businesses show what they have as far as goods. And actually, the chicken example was in Portland and Eugene. They say, well, we have chickens. So, if another company within the area is looking for chickens, they can go on there and find them. And it allows other businesses in the area to grow economies of scale and to keep the money within the economy here. But that website is really a great tool to facilitate that conversation between businesses. That was one way that we, we saw it happening. Other than that, it was mostly independent, happening on its own independently, where businesses were taking the initiative to go out and find these local resources, rather than importing them from across the country. And Oregon itself, as you mentioned, has such a strong agriculture, and Marion County specifically is one of the top producers of agriculture in the state. So, if we can use that, such as hazelnuts, or, or turf here, grass seed, and help promote that in Oregon, that would be extremely beneficial to the economic situation in the county, as well as in the state.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Brentano heard you talk about where to get chickens.
Yeah.
I believe he has.
I think they were talking about chickens to eat. So, you did a lot of interviews with a lot of different groups.
Yes.
What one or two interviews did you find that shifted your thinking, or created the most new thoughts as you were interviewing them?
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. We, one of the ones that I found interesting was actually speaking with Commissioner Nyquist in Lynn County. It was, he was very funny. And he actually said that they don't have an economic development strategy yet, and they're working on it. And by speaking with him and speaking with the Association of Oregon Counties, we really saw how far ahead Marion County is with economic development. He was actually joking that he would just write down suggestions on a napkin as we were speaking. So, the fact that Marion County is already known for SEDCOR, and already known for EDAB even, that's very important. And getting that information out to the public is important, to show them what we're doing. So, those two interviews really worked together. And Lynn County, the reason we interviewed them was because they have a youth wage program there, and the youth, amount of youths working with businesses was very low. So, they helped boost the pay for, or lower, sorry, lower the pay, and almost subsidized part of that pay to promote youth employment. And that was interesting. That's one of the practices that we were looking into. And so, just speaking with him was, was enlightening. Also, the Latino Business Council interview was very interesting, to see the perspective that the council had, and working with businesses in Oregon, or, sorry, in Woodburn. And hearing, almost hearing from those businesses through, I don't remember the gentleman's name off the top of my head, but he's one of the founders of the Latino Business Council.
Jose.
Thank you, yes. So, working with, through, working with him to hear those businesses was really interesting, to see their perspective. And so, those were the, the two or three interviews that I, I personally found the most interesting. Thank you.
Should I have one more?
Sure.
So, I haven't had a chance to read your report, but do you discuss at all the provision of infrastructure by local government, for example, roads? I give a specific example. We've had long had a goal of a certain overpass on, on Corden Road that would open up areas for, you know, development and stuff. It kind of gets messy, because some of those should be borne by developers, but you can also encourage, and by doing those. So, do you discuss that at all, or any special thoughts? I feel like it's, I'm, yeah, just to give you a prejudiced answer, I feel like it's a real legitimate, perhaps, the most important role in economic development local government can have.
That's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner Brentano. So, we have, when we were researching economic development, several sources, many, many sources, said that infrastructure was the most important, important part of economic development. And as you heard, the stakeholders felt that as well. And that means roads, but we also thought that, that meant workforce development, that that was in that infrastructure as well. You have to have a solid infrastructure for the entire community, as well as for the physical aspects of infrastructure. And upon our research, we found that economic development support was already going to infrastructure through the land use planning, and through, I'm sorry, there were other sections of that, the 1.5 million is already going to, and I can go back to that. So, land use planning is a large portion of that. So, we know that the county is already helping with this, and we know that, for example, the, was it the surplus, the economic, the funds that were given out for, after the recession.
Oh, the stimulus.
Yes, thank you. The stimulus funds were used for sidewalks and, and curbs. So, that is important. That is important. However, I'm not sure how much of that sits on the county, and how much of that sits on the state and, and working with ODOT. So, yes.
If I can just tag onto that, I mean, we're looking at infrastructure now, is adding that in. And the challenge is, when you look at all of the needs in just the canyon, and then you start taking that out to North County and the other places where they've started surveying, I mean, it's multi, multi-millions of dollars, and we have a couple hundred thousand that we're granting, and if, you know, if we shift a few, you know, it might be like 300,000 if we found some money elsewhere. So, I, you know, I mean, there's a, that's where, when we had some discussions, looking at this more globally, that it's not simply the million-plus dollars that we have of lottery funds in the county, but it's the influence that we have with all of these other funding sources at the federal level, at the state level, at the regional level, in these groups that we... that we work with. And then how do we influence and target those? Because even if we do target some of our economic development funds, you know, they could probably go to studies, but there's not going to be enough to build a sewer system or put in broadband or build a road or a bridge. But, and then the other piece is that while we do, I mean, I'm very much in favor of the land use planning money that we put there because it's important to, it's more like a regulatory piece where it helps people get their plans in and do long-range planning and that kind of thing. But that's not boots-on-the-ground money at all. I mean, there, not one road, not one, you know, nothing's created out of that money. So I think we have a ways to go to kind of figure out how we do that.
If I may add, some of the innovative practices we saw for economic development for infrastructure, Portland, for example, just started putting in pipes that have turbines in the pipes, in the water pipes. So they generate electricity and that's a pilot program. But there are things like that that are happening that actually generate funds back to cities. So with that, it's generating electricity that goes back to PGE. They will receive funds for that. And right now, it's on a small scale. They're trying it out. But to monitor those things and as we've discussed, reassessing, well, how does that work for Portland? Five years down the road, is that still working for them? Would that be something that in the future we can implement and actually make money off of those types of things? And other cities have worked with different software programs on even making their stoplights and their pedestrian lights more effective so that traffic flows more freely and really doesn't stop up roads and roadway systems for economic development so that people can get home and go to their business. So there are different ideas out there, but the research is so widespread that it is hard to really narrow down where that money is supposed to come from and who's responsible for it. And just monitoring those interesting ideas would be important.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So tell us where you lived before you went to Alamo.
I am from New York, so I'm actually from Syracuse, which is why I found the metropolitan import plan or export plan interesting, that it was in Syracuse and Portland. But yes, and I came here for family.
Very good.
Thank you.
So I'm going to have each one of your team members also come up and introduce themselves so that they feel like they didn't just get a bye today and maybe just make one short comment about, you know, what you learned from this project. So if you'd each come, if you'd all come up and just kind of gather around and if you would just hand them that microphone right there.
Thank you very much.
Sure. If you want to just pick up the microphone and hold it like a hand mic, that'll work. It's not that heavy.
Oh, good morning. My name is Mickey Frost and I helped with some of the stakeholder interviews. And so we learned a lot about, a lot of people focused on infrastructure and I also talked with Travel Salem, so obviously they promoted tourism.
And you're from where?
Roseburg, Oregon.
Very good.
Good morning. My name is Caleb War. I'm from Seattle, Washington area. And throughout this project, I kind of worked a little bit on each kind of aspect and putting together our final report. It was great working this year with you all and learned a lot with this. And it was nice to have an opportunity also to just work with government because most of our projects are not in government, so it's nice to have that perspective as well.
Thank you, Kim.
I'm Will Christensen. I'm originally from New Jersey. I came out here a couple of years ago to do AmeriCorps and then ended up at Will Lamont off of a recommendation from a teacher I worked with. My focus a lot was on getting the data that you saw provided on the counties and just figuring out what is important. And a lot of it came from talking with the other people around and everything. But it just learning to work with a wide variety of people is what I think is most important about this program, what I've learned the most from, is how to get the most out of people from very different backgrounds.
Thank you, Will.
My name is Wu Tran and I'm from Seattle, Washington. And I moved out here two years ago to Portland. I've been involved most of the time to doing research and also some interviews with the stakeholders. So I learned to, how to categorize all the research to see what is useful and what is not. And also, you know, doing interviews with the stakeholders to get all the information from them to have the research.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Narjes. I'm from Saudi Arabia. I actually enjoyed working with you and learned a lot of, about Marion County and government in the US. I was involved with the research and some of the interviews and it was very nice working with you. Thank you.
And who's missing today? There's a couple, there's at least one or two people missing, right?
We are missing Jody Renfro. He's from Florence, Oregon. And he was, he worked with the academic research. We're missing Robert Montgomery, who is from Salem. And he worked on research and he did a lot of the interviews. And we're also missing Aziz Almosa, who is also from Saudi Arabia. And he helped with research on the county, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the work that you did. So now we move to public comment and there is no one signed up for public comment. So we will then move to our consent calendar and we're going to tap Commissioner Cameron since he wasn't here last week.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for keeping things going while I was gone. Good trip. I'll move the consent calendar. First on the consent calendar's, under Community Service, approved an order appointing Dave Tibbetts to the Economic Development Advisory Board to a term ending June 30, 2018. And just so you know, Dave is from Columbia Helicopters. Approve Amendment Number 26 to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to receive an additional $150,860 for community addictions and mental health services. Also, under Health, approve Amendment Number Two to the grant agreement with Oregon Health Authority to receive an additional $54,000 for individuals with serious mental illness. Under Public Works, approve an order reappointing Thomas Smith and Judy Skinner to Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council for a four-year term ending March 31, 2019. Judy did a great job teaching us in our class. Under the Sheriff's Department, approve Amendment Number Two to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections to receive an additional $17,000 Measure 57 funds.
I'll second it. I just have a question, maybe if either of you noticed off the top of your head, I'm trying to look it up. So the, under Health, that $150,000 for community addictions, is that pretty normal money or did something exceptional happen to bring it in here? Does anybody know about it?
So as I understand this, because this is Amendment Number 26.
Just common.
Right. So what happens? It's like the feds send the money to the state and the state gives a contract to the county. And then every time there's an adjustment in the rate or something changes and they redistribute all the money, it goes up and down. And every county gets these contracts. And this has been an issue that we've talked about at the Association of Oregon Counties because it's a lot of paperwork to go through to adjust things, a few dollars here and a few dollars there. But that's my sense that this was just one more adjustment of.
So it's pretty normal. I was hoping it was some reflection of the work you've done and the work we've done to try to make it better here in the county.
Yeah, I'm not thinking so. Gloria, have you seen anything that would tell you otherwise?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it appears from the paperwork, all of these are going to a specific residential treatment home. So it's probably tied to a specific client's.
All right. Just curious.
All right.
So if I didn't second that, I will.
It is because we're so wonderful and we're doing a really great job. We'll just make that up. It's true. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, those items are approved. We just have one item under action today and no public hearings. So that item is under Public Works, is to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment case number ZCCP 14-002 Ferris Timber, Inc., Clerk's File Number 5688. And Joe Fenimore is here to introduce the item.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request to change the comprehensive plan designation from primary agriculture to farm timber and to change the zone from exclusive farmies to farm timber on a 28-acre parcel located in the 7500 block of Sherman Road Southeast. As you may recall, the initial application was to change the comprehensive plan to rural residential and the zone to acreage residential with an exception to statewide planning goal three. After a public hearing on the matter with the hearings officer, she issued a recommendation that the board deny that request. And at a subsequent hearing before the board, the applicant requested the board remand the matter back to the hearings officer to consider a modified request to change both the comprehensive plan and the zone to FT Farm Timber, which would not require a goal exception. And the hearings officer held a public hearing on the modified request on January 7, 2015, and on February 18 issued a recommendation that the board grant the request. The board conducted a public hearing April 1, 2015, and approved the modified request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared and notice of adoption was given on April 15. The administrative ordinance is now set for formal adoption. The board has the option of adopting the ordinance, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance or choose not to adopt an ordinance at this time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? This is a happy ending to a long process.
Yeah.
So for people listening, as Joe talked about, this was a very lengthy process for the applicant and they did come forward with one proposal and then that proposal wasn't, didn't jive with the land, state land use laws and regulations. And so some creative thinking went back and came up with a different route and were able to get a different zone change. And so then we've had, we had both the public hearings for both angles of it. And now this is just the final step where the staff goes back, writes an ordinance, then the ordinance gets attached to the hearings officer's decision, which puts forth all of the various, it's an analysis basically of all of our county zone codes and the state land use laws and goals and all of that. And she has found it passed muster in every step. And so we're at the point now where we can approve this.
Just a little comment because you reminded me of it, I hope, and I think it is, an example of a county attitude that we're trying to, you know, how do we make things happen for people instead of telling them how they can't? And I'm very encouraged by this. And we heard Alan Haley, Director of Public Works, talk about that very theme. So this is, like you said, creative, make something work, takes a piece of property made that really was unusable for anything and finds a valid use to the benefit of all. Pretty happy about the process. And as such, I'd like to make the motion that we do adopt the administrative ordinance that grants the Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Case ZCCP 14002 Ferris Timber Incorporated.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the administrative ordinance. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved. Thank you, Joe, for all of your good work on this.
Good work, Joe.
It's great. So that concludes our business today and I'll go ahead and read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. Today is Wednesday, April 22nd, and we're just completing our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. It is also Administrative Professionals Day. And so we want to take a moment to thank all of the people in Marion County who both work at Marion County itself and who work in offices and businesses across Marion County for the work that they do to make sure that business gets done. It's a critical position and I know that in our board office, we very much rely on our administrative professional staff. And I believe there's going to be a little celebration at noon today. Mr. Brentano is organizing, so.
Oregon Garden, birthday too.
Very much appreciate that. There we go, all right. Tomorrow, Thursday, at 10:00 a.m. on April 23rd, is a one-on-one Department Head-Elected Officials Meeting with Jeff White, Director of the Finance Department. And we call these the five-on-ones rather than the one-on-one. And that'll be in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. At 4:00 tomorrow, Thursday, we will also be taping at, over at the CCTV Studios, a program about OSU Extension. So that will be at 575 Trade Street Southeast in Salem. Monday, April 27th, at 8:30 is the Board of Commissioners' Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square, followed at 9:00 by management update, same place, followed at 11:00 by a BOC CAO meeting. And we will notice an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192662 A, B, D, F, and I, any contingency. Also in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square. At 1:30 on Monday, will be a five-on-one meeting with Fay Fagel, Juvenile Department Director, in the Silverton Conference Room. Then Tuesday morning at 8:30 is a meeting of the Community Corrections Board, Silverton Conference Room, followed at 10:15 by a regular board meeting of the Marion County Housing Authority. Wednesday, April 29th, at 8:30, all day, 8:30 to 4, is an Economic Vitality Summit and that will be held at Foothills Church, 975 Freon Ridge Road Southeast in State. And I believe that's noticed because the Commissioners are going piecemeal out there as schedules permit. So we will still be having our board session at 9:00 here in the Senator Hearing Room. And then we, I think, are looking to actually reschedule the meeting with Lori Steele so that we can make sure that.
We spend more time there.
Yes. Or we just had some schedule problems and going out there and coming back made, so we will be rescheduling the meeting with Lori. And that is it. So what do you know? So you went to Nashville, New Orleans. Where else did you go?
Memphis.
And they're beating the Blazers all the dickens.
Fifteen, I got to the Blazer game, actually.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, we were in Memphis Sunday night.
It wasn't much of a show.
So it was pretty cool. I will say this, it was a very educational trip for me. I'm getting a little emotional, obviously we did some Civil War stuff over there. But the hospitality of the South was amazing. I mean, everybody was so friendly everywhere we went. To tour the Civil Rights Museum, you know, a lot of music history, but then you go from the music into some of the historical stuff. And to stand there where Martin Luther King was assassinated and see the hotel and go through that and think about how recent some of the struggles that we've been through as a country. It was, my wife and I were very, I mean, it's got, going to Washington DC for the first time, you know, you just, you just feel it differently. So, yeah, it was a great trip. Judy and I had a wonderful, wonderful time and thank you for allowing me to go and be back safely. It was, it was really neat. Bayou country.
Do you have any?
Saw an alligator. Yeah, I got a picture of an alligator. We were on the, it was in the National Park down by Mobile, what, that long National Park that actually goes out onto the Gulf. I'm trying to think of the name of it right now, but it's like the longest shoreline of preservation in the United States. And we were on the inland side, obviously, but there was an alligator down in a deal.
I won a semester at South Florida in Tampa and just in the golf courses, they all full of snakes and alligators. Kind of makes it a little difficult to get your lost ball and I had several in there.
Did you eat anything unusual?
I did. Oh, yeah, in the middle of nowhere, we pulled into this drive-in and, well, it's not unusual, but you just don't find it here. And I like, I used to eat calf liver until I found out I had high cholesterol and fried chicken livers, a whole basket full of them, you know, with homemade french fries.
It's been good.
Yeah, it was really good. And I ate them because we were kind of traveling and I ate them while we were in the car, you know, and there's a certain sauce you put on them and it just did not stay off of my shirt. I finally just gave up. I just said, okay, Judy, we'll wash it. But, yeah, the chicken livers, a lot of good barbecue. Yeah, it was, it was, I'm trying to think of what we had in New Orleans. Oh, I had some shrimp that were about that big that were not peeled, that were in a, like a gravy sauce, Sam. You would have loved these. And the guy actually made me put a bib on before I ate them. But while I was sitting there eating those shrimp, all the phones, it'd be like we're sitting here, all the phones pop with a tornado warning.
Oh.
And my wife looked at the guy, we were sitting up at the bar, and my wife looked at the guy and says, should we be worried about this? He says, no, just order another one. They weren't worried at all. It was in New Orleans.
We better get those from home, Phil. That'd be a good idea.
Prawns.
Now, changing subjects a little bit, so the first of, I guess a continuation of meetings that were 14 or 15 years ago with Silverton, Mont Angel, hoping to get Scott Melson and Jervis there, but it was 24 people there. Well-attended. We were a little bit rushed, apologize for being late. Somebody drives faster than I do, I found out.
Everyone drives faster than you.
Then why do I get the tickets? That's another subject. But.
Oh, you were polite. Let me go first.
Pretty happy with it, want to do it again, at least on a quarterly basis. Such a great opportunity to meet people and get first views of some issues. opportunity to meet people and get first views of some issues and before their issues, so I'd call it very much of a success.
So how many towns were represented, then?
A lot of people from Jervis and Mon Angel. I mean, not Jervis, excuse me, Silverton, nobody from Jervis that I know.
Okay, so Silverton and Mon Angel were the primary.
Yeah.
But the others are, I'd certainly like to see them there. Steel Hammer Road looks like it's going to be coming into our vision sometime, almost like this, you were speaking with Kate about the developers doing some road of, you know, we haven't heard of subdivisions for a long time. They talked about a 44-unit subdivision going in on this road, and then that puts impacts, and the city wants to do their share but encourage us to try to pick up the rest, you know? Well, I know, I like to help, we'll see what we can do.
Well, they all think we have lots and lots of money because it just looks bigger.
Oh, now you're starting to sound like John. Come on now.
No, seriously, they do.
All right.
I'm not saying we do, I'm just saying that it looks like we do.
Anyway, just ideas of what you learned and maybe we help.
Very good, yeah, that's, it's a breakthrough, it really is, to have that breakfast up there because it's been more than a decade since we've had that, so, very good that you were able to pull that together.
I really didn't. I should have done it years ago, they've asked for it, both Rick Lewis from Silverton and Eileen, the city manager from Mon Angel, really, to make it happen. If you listened to it this morning, Eileen comes from central Oregon, and they had a real active group of communities, and she was looking for it here, so she worked on it, too.
Yeah, she mentioned the ability to get together and talk about legislative issues as well. She did come over to the EDAB after our lunch over there, and she sat through the whole EDAB meeting this last month, and she's very plugged in, so it'll be a good connection for me, I know, to start seeing some of those people, because that's one area I haven't really been connected directly to.
She was talking for a tourism kind of, I don't know, theme or whatever for the area, trying to take in the abbey and different things, and all I could think of is, and for a walking tour, they just got to build a road that isn't so steep up to the abbey, and I'd do that. Unless they can figure out how to bust me up, there's probably not going to happen.
So it's the fourth Wednesday, is it going to be?
No, it's, we're going to, I think we said the third Thursday, whatever.
Oh, we're moving it to Thursday?
Yeah, and on a quarterly basis.
Oh, okay.
So we'll get that firmed up.
So, yeah.
So we can not be as rushed.
Yeah. Wednesdays are hard, especially if you're coming all the way back from Silverton, because that's a, depends on traffic.
Half of my breakfast is still sitting out in my car.
All right, well, anything else for the good of the order? I'm very boring, I'm working on a grant, so.
Yeah, we didn't want to say anything.
I have nothing to say. No, you can tell people I'm working on a grant. I am contributing my time and talent to.
You missed that. We didn't want to say anything about you being boring. That's what he was.
I got it, all right.
That's why he's turning red.
Looks like you got some sun over there, Sam.
All right, well, if that's the way we're going in the meeting, that's the way we're going in the meeting, so we will adjourn.